IEPs that is focuses on really strong goals and outcomes for kids. So it was very helpful. IEPs that is focuses on really strong goals and outcomes for kids. So it was very helpful. We got very positive feedback about that. Our ELL department worked on alignment with the WITA standards and some collaboration with general ed teachers. So and then the We got very positive feedback about that. Our ELL department worked on alignment with the kind of big marquee thing was our seven to 12 work with AI and thinking about teaching WITA standards and some collaboration with general ed teachers. So and then the kind and learning with AI. We had a keynote Greg Schwambek, who is cartooned up there. That's of big marquee thing was our seven to 12 work with AI and thinking about teaching and learning from his website. And he did a fantastic job. And we also had staff facilitated workshops with AI. We had a keynote Greg Schwambek, who is cartooned up there. That's from his after that and a student panel. And Jerry was there, which is great. It was my favorite website. And he did a fantastic job. And we also had staff facilitated workshops after part of the day, as usual. You can see the array of different types of, kind of different that and a student panel and Jerry was there, which is great. It was my favorite part of types of offerings that took place in terms of the options for teachers. Some of the the day as usual. You can see the array of different types of kind of different types more interesting ones up there. Greg, who was our keynote, did a piece for teachers of offerings that took place in terms of the options for teachers. Some of the more on Notebook LM, for example, which is essentially an AI tool that would allow a teacher to interesting ones up there. Greg, who was our keynote, did a piece for teachers on Notebook create almost like a closed environment. So whereas chat polls from the internet, Notebook LM, for example, which is essentially an AI tool that would allow a teacher to create LM, you can upload all your source materials, all your textbooks, class notes, presentations almost like a closed environment. So whereas chat polls from the internet, Notebook LM, from over the years into this and basically use that data set to create things for students you can upload all your source materials, all your textbooks, class notes, presentations for differentiated instruction. So it's an incredibly powerful teaching tool. And I from over the years into this and basically use that data set to create things for students think people were pretty jazzed about that one in particular. But in general, feedback about the day has been great from folks. Student panel was a big hit, too. Wanted for differentiated instruction. So it's an incredibly powerful teaching tool. And I to give proper recognition to the kids who were up there. They were, I think, honest. think people were pretty jazzed about that one in particular. But in general, feedback about the day has been great from folks. Student panel was a big hit, too. Wanted They may have held back a little bit, but at some point they they basically told us, you know, yes, when you give us textbooks to read, we are, we are looking at AI summaries. to give proper recognition to the kids who were up there. They were, I think, honest. That is often what we're doing. And I thought that that level of honesty is actually really They may have held back a little bit, but at some point they they basically told us, helpful for us to understand what's happening out there. And, and I think it was great you know, yes, when you give us textbooks to read, we are, we are looking at AI summaries. That is often what we're doing. And I thought that that level of honesty is actually really for the teachers to hear that in particular, to kind of understand where kids are and helpful for us to understand what's happening out there. And, and I think it was great what they're doing. Final, final few things here. I have done some initial outreach about for the teachers to hear that in particular, to kind of understand where kids are and pulling together a school calendar committee. This is reflected in strategic priorities what they're doing. Final, final few things here. I have done some initial outreach about this year, kind of coming on the heels of last year where we're really grappling with this issue. I've done outreach and have started getting names from staff. I'll be beginning pulling together a school calendar committee. This is reflected in strategic priorities outreach to the wider community in the next week. And then the goal is to start that this year, kind of coming on the heels of last year where we're really grappling with group meeting in December and to have some recommendations by the end of this year, certainly this issue. I've done outreach and have started getting names from staff. I'll be beginning outreach to the wider community in the next week. And then the goal is to start that by the end of the summer, for a kind of long term solution to the calendar kind of, kind group meeting in December and to have some recommendations by the end of this year, certainly of issues that we're struggling with as a community. I think, I want to be clear, it's by the end of the summer, for a kind of long term solution to the calendar kind of, kind not a quick fix. And so I will be bringing forward a proposed calendar kind of based on what we are doing now at our next meeting. So we can look at that and consider it for of issues that we're struggling with as a community. I think, I want to be clear, it's next year, 26, 27. But looking beyond that is where this group's focus will be. And not a quick fix. And so I will be bringing forward a proposed calendar kind of based on what we are doing now at our next meeting. So we can look at that and consider it for then Jerry is going to help us out with some athletics updates. You can do it from there next year, 26, 27. But looking beyond that is where this group's focus will be. And or there, wherever you want to be.
Sure. Okay. Can everyone hear me? Okay, so I'm going to provide a quick update on
then Jerry is going to help us out with some athletics updates. You can do it from there
fall sports this year at Westboro High School. So overall, I thought we had a pretty successful
or there, wherever you want to be.
Sure. Okay. Can everyone hear me? Okay, so I'm going to provide a quick update on season. The boys golf team competed in the Division One States finals match and they placed ninth in the state, which is pretty good for them. The boy soccer team won the fall sports this year at Westboro High School. So overall, I thought we had a pretty successful season. The boys golf team competed in the Division One States finals match and they league championship, actually, and they qualified for the playoffs, but lost in the round of 32. Girls field hockey team qualified for the state tournament is the 14th seed and placed ninth in the state, which is pretty good for them. The boy soccer team won the they beat Shrewsbury at home in the round of 32 game in a thrilling ever overtime victory. league championship, actually, and they qualified for the playoffs, but lost in the round of 32. Girls field hockey team qualified for the state tournament is the 14th seed and One of our senior captains actually scored the winning goal. So it's pretty cool to they beat Shrewsbury at home in the round of 32 game in a thrilling ever overtime victory. see. Our girls volleyball team qualified for the state championships is the 11th seed and they beat Lowell in the round of 32. Unfortunately, they did not win the state One of our senior captains actually scored the winning goal. So it's pretty cool to see. Our girls volleyball team qualified for the state championships is the 11th seed championship for the fourth year in a row, but they still did pretty good. Our girls soccer team, they qualified with the playoffs and unfortunately lost in the round of 32 and they beat Lowell in the round of 32. Unfortunately, they did not win the state to Lexington. And girls cross country team placed third in the league meet and we actually championship for the fourth year in a row, but they still did pretty good. Our girls soccer team, they qualified with the playoffs and unfortunately lost in the round of 32 had two runners finish in the top three. So Claire Hall was first in the league with to Lexington. And girls cross country team placed third in the league meet and we actually the time of 18 minutes and 17 seconds. And Regan Kittredge was third in the league with the time of 19 minutes and 13 seconds. Unfortunately, our football team is not doing great this had two runners finish in the top three. So Claire Hall was first in the league with the time of 18 minutes and 17 seconds. And Regan Kittredge was third in the league with year. So don't have too much to share about them. But yeah, it's a quick update on fall the time of 19 minutes and 13 seconds. Unfortunately, our football team is not doing great this sports.
It's a building year, building year for football. I did want to share too. This is, you know, we're just really grateful for Westboro TV. They do, if you're not aware
year. So don't have too much to share about them. But yeah, it's a quick update on fall
of this, they do a highlight reel.
sports.
It's a building year, building year for football. I did want to share too. This is, you know, we're just really grateful for Westboro TV. They do, if you're not aware of this, they do a highlight reel. Really is. It just, it's such a, it's such a wonderful thing to have that kind of support from the local TV station. So wanted to share that. And last but not least, this is rolling out soon. I'll be sending this out to the high school tomorrow, which is I'm going to have a contest for high school students for snow day announcements. So they can submit either a visual or audio kind of feature that would go out in the event that we do have a snow day. And I have a panel that has signed up to kind of help out. So Chris Payant from DPW, Karen Henderson from Westboro TV, I've got folks from the fine arts department because, you know, there's artistic merit involved. And it can be funny or serious and or very heartfelt, but whatever it is, it'll be a kind of fun thing to do between now and Thanksgiving. So now that the first term is over, I thought it was probably good timing. And that is it from my update.
So we'll have a snow day for sure.
I think, I think my idea is if I do this, maybe there won't be any snow days. That is the theory. So we'll see how it goes. I think the seniors are probably betting in the other direction. They usually do.
So I think Amanda's here for the DECA trip permission form.
Yes, I am. Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda Ugrenow. I'm one of the school counselors at the high school, but I am also the DECA advisor. I come forward because we have two overnight trips that we need to get approved. One that is happening in March on the 12th through the 14th. And then we have a second one that will be happening in April. Let me explain a little bit for those of you who are new about what is DECA. DECA is almost like a business decathlon where students compete in different categories, whether that be a principals category, which is like our introductory pieces, marketing, quick service, restaurant management, hospitality and tourism, human resources, all different kinds of business pieces where either they do a test and a role play, or they do a prepared project where they come in either with a 20 page research paper or a 20 pitch, 20, 20 page pitch deck where they kind of do marketing campaigns. This year, I have 109 students in my club, which is the largest club at Westboro High School. The problem with these kind of trips is that I can't give you the official numbers of who's going to go because our first competition is not till January. On the seventh, it's a field trip where students are going to Nichols College and going to compete in person. And then that day, that afternoon, they find out if they're in the top four of their category, they move on to the state's level of competition. Last year, we had 27 students go. The year prior to that, we had 37 students go. It's hard to know exactly how many go to the state level of competition. And then we have the international level of competition, which is our April trip. The international level of competition this year is in Atlanta, Georgia. I believe we'll be going from the Friday of April break to the Wednesday after April break, which numbers in my head. I'm like, it's the 24th, I think, through the 30th or 31st, somewhere around there. And last year, we took seven students to compete. The year prior, we took five students to compete and two students to do our leadership academies there. These are costly trips and the students are aware, families are aware. They do sign contracts at the very beginning of the year stating that they understand what the commitment is. And it's like a sports team. I want to say some of the cool things that DECA has done is last year, we actually won a corporate challenge where we got third place, where Zern LK, which is our water bottle fillers company, ended up picking our school to say that like, you do have a water problem and we need some help, which is not the best thing, but at the same time is wonderful. We ended up getting donated about $21,000 worth of water bottle fillers and filters because of the work my students had done for that. One of the things I always get asked when I come here to school committee, what about the cost? What about the cost? What about the cost? So this year, we've already secured funding from different sponsorships. We reach out to different business partners within the community and the greater Massachusetts as a whole. Last year, I think we got about $2,000 donated. The year prior, we had about $6,000 donated, which does help offset some of the costs for students and also helps pay for students who could not afford to usually attend. I also have a team that I'm working on, so I will be back later this school year. We are looking to start what they call a school based enterprise, which is another part of DECA. And that would be something that the school committee would have to approve, the building would have to approve. There's like a lot of different steps, but they're actually writing a formal business plan, which would be a passive form of income for the club so that we can continue to lower costs. So that is my two trips. And any questions?
Start with Steve.
No, I think it's wonderful. It's, it's great when the kids get to see just about anything that's not right here. Process of the trip, the logistics of getting everybody set with you as well as for them, and the learning experience they have just to travel with a group of people. It's a zoo that happens, particularly when it's overnight, having done that once a long time ago with the trip to Virginia, I think it was. And a lot of people learned a lot of things during that trip. So particularly if you have shepherds, they learn. Anyway, I'm in favor of that kind of opportunity for every kid in school. And that you have some financial support is also great for the families that otherwise might not be able to do. Certainly in favor of it. Hope it works well.
No question. Just thank you for leading this club. I mean, the proof is in the pudding. 109 students is amazing. And so thank you. I'm sure it's a huge amount of work. And but it's obviously something that's of great interest. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a big supporter of DECA. I've heard a lot of good things from students that were part of this club or still are. And they love it. I'm just curious, how many students did you have two years ago, a year ago?
Yes. So last year, we had 87. So and the year before that, I'm not 100% sure because I came in like halfway through. I feel like we were in the 70 range. I want to say we were in the 70 range.
So it keeps growing.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. My only question, I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit more about kind of the passive income and the enterprise fund that you mentioned at the end of the presentation?
Absolutely. Sure. So part of DECA is that typically, most of the schools that we're competing against, it's actually integrated into the school curriculum. We don't have that here, which is totally fine and understandable. But a lot of the times, schools will run a school store where they essentially are selling merch, but also doing like business kind of like return on investment and marketing their businesses and like what can sell and what can't sell, the legal side of things. Because we don't have it as part of our curriculum, we are looking to eventually propose a vending machine. There is a company that partners with DECA at the international level that gives you essentially a curriculum with a vending machine. And it also gives you power to turn it off during the school day. It will give you all of the data statistics and like what's selling, what's not selling. So I have a team of five students who are working on the proposal as we speak, essentially. We meet every Thursday after school to kind of continue to work through the proposal. We have reached out to a couple of lawyers to see if they would do some pro bono work to just kind of look through our document, look through those pieces. We did some marketing research. We surveyed all of Westboro High School as well as the staff at Westboro High School. We got over 300 responses, which was surprisingly a lot. And truly, like we've been kind of figuring out like what, what would our, why, why would we build this company? What is it going to give back to the community? What are the things that we are like using kind of to figure out like what does sell, what doesn't sell, what, you know, what is the pieces there? They would, they also do support and cashless pay as well. So we're hoping that we can get it funded. We're hoping that the kids also have plans to do a lot of different fundraisers throughout the year. And that specific team is going to be proposing a pickleball tournament in the spring to kind of help bring more funding in specifically for that so that we can have a passive income over time.
Yeah. And that is fantastic. And if I could just ask a quick follow up question. Is there any plan? I know when I went to Westboro High that there was a school store there. Is there any hope eventually to transition into the school store as well or just starting with the vending machine for now?
Yes, hopefully. I think the tricky part with having a school store is one, the space, two, the non-compete agreement we have with Chartwell's, three, the staffing the store. You know, if we're selling during the school day, like what can we sell, what can't we sell with the non-compete agreement with Chartwell's, whether the legal things that Massachusetts has in place for nutritional guidelines. There's a lot of different pieces there. If it's integrated into the curriculum, it's a lot easier because the business teachers could do that. But our two business teachers do not integrate DECA into the curriculum. And that is, I don't, I can't say why. I don't know, because I'm just the advisor for the club piece of it. But I mean, as we continue to grow and build that, I'm hoping maybe at some point, yes, the school store, the vending machine company kind of functions as like a passive school store, essentially, that the club could run without sort of any kinds of qualms. But this is in very early planning stages. There's no things set in stone. There's nothing that like is going to like move forward. We are just working through our business proposal plan. First, we will have something to bring to school committee, hopefully in the 2026, to then hopefully kind of work through the different kind of logistical pieces and go from there. So.
Thanks so much for the presentation.
Absolutely. Do you get to ask questions?
Yes.
You don't have any?
Good to see you. She's my counselor. So.
I just saw you today. So.
Thanks, Amanda, so much for coming. I also fully support this program. I think that it's such a value for the kids. And I wonder, two questions. What is, in January, do you take all 109 kids on a field trip?
Yes.
Wow. Wow.
It's, 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 there is, so our district is District 7. So at one time, there will be about 500 to 800 students storming Nichols to all compete that day. Then we go into their auditorium and then that day, they find out if they've moved on to states or not. So it's a lot. Yeah.
So, and I'm not sure exactly how the cost works, whether it's per pupil or whether it's based on like the team or our cost or something like that. But since it's a nonprofit, I imagine that that might be, I mean, people must be incentivized with the tax write-offs for the donations, right?
I think it's a little bit tricky this year. I saw a lot of turnover because our activity fees went up originally because we were a club. They were $75, which is standard across the board at every Westboro club. But this year, I was not informed of this until like literally like I stepped in the building and I spoke to someone and they were like, oh, yeah, $200 this year, right? And I was like, $200? Oh, my gosh, that's a lot of money to be in a club. On top of the 200, they also need to pay $20 to international DECA because they are an international program that those all go to the different state associations. There's also like a DECA aid fund where they can give out scholarships for students who need travel fees. And then now on top of that, they have to pay an extra $50 to go to districts because they have to pay the school nickel specifically for that. If I had been kind of more in talks when that kind of conversation happened, I think I would have changed our pricing structure so that way that our buses would have been included in the trip's costs. But now it's just a flat 200 rate. And so it's a lot of money upfront. And I will tell you that like, you know, out of 109 students, we only had, you know, out of 87, we only had like 27 go. So it's like a big, to them, what they would call a sunk cost, which I'm learning a lot more about the business acronyms and whatnot. But I think that part of this is that, you know, I want to continue to grow this program and grow the students' understanding of what this means. Luckily, because we do have like people in the community that are more than willing to kind of donate money to our cause, that will cut costs for the hotels. That's usually what costs the most, is the hotels and the flying. And the tricky part about the flying is I can't buy tickets before I know who's going because I'm not shelling out, you know, $2,000. So.
Well, usually though, I'm sure there's just a program cost, right? So for attending these big events, but typically you should be able to get, they should be able to get tax write-offs for any donation that's given towards that cost. So that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Luckily, because my, so I have a team of, so the finance team all do a lot of different sponsorships. So they've reached out to a bunch of different things. Like I said, they go to, they go to like anywhere. We've had people like just give cash off the street downtown. It is a tax write-off. We do give them all the information that they would need for the tax write-off. But I think budgets are tight, so it's hard. I think my students try to do the best that they can. They definitely, I mean, like on top of school, on top of sports, on top of every other club that they run. But the kids that are dedicated to DECA really work hard and really work to kind of get those. And they're the ones that write the emails. They just CC me on them. So it's like, they're the ones that are reaching out in business professional manners and emails and how to write a business professional email to a company, how to ask for those things. It's something that they're also learning kind of tangentially to, so.
So it's interesting. I really appreciate your feedback, especially regarding the activity fee. You know, this was discussed at great length. And I think like, it's really important to look at what feedback you're getting. Obvious, I assume, or would appear that the number of people signing up has not gone down, you know. On the other hand, I would say that I can speak for everyone here when I say that we would never want that to be a barrier for any families and that, you know, the district would take care of the costs or the fees where necessary, where there's a family that could not, we would never want that to be a barrier for a child to be a part of any activity. But I appreciate that feedback regarding the fee and all of that. So, but.
I haven't had any complaints yet, which is good. I'm just waiting for the email of like, my student didn't place. Can I get the refund? And I'm like, well, complicated.
This was a question I had too, because I know that there's, you know, well, A, with clubs, you've got a lot of people who are heavy in the beginning and then they kind of just start to stop attending the meetings. But then especially with DECA, it's really dependent on how, whether or not they're going to be able to move forward. So there's a lot of kids who, when they're not moving forward, they're not really attending anything. And so then it's kind of, you know, so it's tough, but it's also balancing.
It's all about balance, right? I mean, we had a, we had a mandatory meeting after school today and I think I had 80 students show up. A bunch had emailed me very professionally saying that they were unable to attend. And I said, not a problem. Thank you for letting me know. But like giving them those kind of mini tiny like business lessons, even though I'm not a business teacher, is also important to me. So they are also presenting themselves professionally. And I think, you know, I think part of it is like, you know, if, if a family were to come to me, I would always say like, these are the steps we can take here. Here's some of the funding that we've already secured from outside businesses that we can put towards your child. You know, we always try to do those pieces and there are scholarships that are at the DECA International that we need to apply for, but like I try to help kids do all of that as well. So.
But thank you so much for dedicating your time and coming here. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. It's like my favorite hobby outside of school.
So I don't know if this is something that we're voting on right now. All right, so we will do that.
I would move both trips.
Yep.
A second?
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you, Amanda. I do want to give a shout out. I had a student who kind of came and met with Matt and I, who is a DECA student, to make a pitch for incorporating more financial literacy into the curriculum. So it was impressive pitch and she did a great job, so.
Was she successful?
Yes, actually, as it so happens, one of the courses she was saying, you know, it would be great to have this, is one of the courses that I think the high school is looking to add next year in terms of AP. So.
So I will now hand it over to Matt, who is going to show us this extremely impressive presentation and talk to us regarding the memo that he sent about MCAS.
Yeah. Thank you. And find a comfortable seat. I, just as a disclaimer, I'm gonna, I'm actually setting a timer for myself. I'm gonna try to keep it to like 10 to 15 minutes and then really focus on questions. And really, the, the purpose here is to walk you through the MCAS results from 2025 with the context of how we've done over a five-year period, looking at student growth percentile data, looking at achievement data, looking at how we perform to the state average, but also our benchmark districts, and really looking at trends and the next steps and the takeaways. So in the packet, there were two documents that were linked. One is a written executive memo, and then one is a obnoxiously long 130-slide presentation. I am not going to go over that, but it's there. And the way it's formatted is it's broken down by grade level and by subject content area assessed for every single MCAS that we administer. So all the data is there. And then at the end, I'm happy to take questions. But a little bit about the MCAS, and this is more for perhaps people watching at home or watching on record. What the MCAS measures is the mass curriculum frameworks and the state's standards. We are, even though the high school graduation requirement is no longer tied to passing 10th grade MCAS, we are still compelled to provide the MCAS to all students. The timing is always late March to early June. And the state sets a order or a batting order, so to speak. So it always requires English, math, and then civics and social, um, science and then civics and social studies in that, in that order. The test grades are three through 10. In fact, this graphic here might shed some light on it. You can see we start testing in third grade for English and math. Science, technology, and engineering STE occurs in grades five and eight. The 10th grade science test is on bio, biology, and civics was, it's been in a pilot phase for the last couple of years. And this was the first time the state has actually collected data and, and shared that data with schools and families. So, understanding MCAS, this slide here explains the question, how did my child do on MCAS? What was their score? So the state breaks it down into four performance levels and indicators. Between partially meeting and meeting expectations, you can put a quantitative number there of 500. That is like the threshold for passing the MCAS, so to speak. So anything 500 to 529 is meeting expectations. Above that would be exceeding, and then partially meeting would be 490 to 470. I bring that up because when we look at the data, we get very granular and will say, oh, some students had a 498 or 496. That means they just missed passing the MCAS by one or two questions, depending upon how they did. I'll speak to that point later. The other metric that's really helpful to look at MCAS is student growth percentile data. And what this measures is change over time and progress over time. It's separate and distinct from performance, and that's an important thing to note. The example I'll give is there's approximately 60,000 to 70,000 students in the Commonwealth in a grade. It varies, but, so imagine you took all the third graders and you put them in Gillette Stadium, right? That's the size. And you said, all the third graders are going to take a math MCAS at the same time. And they do that. Then we look at all of the data that comes out and you say, okay, what are all the students that got a score of a 502, just passing? Then a year goes back, goes by, and then the next year, we say, in fourth grade, we're going to test that same group of students and we're going to focus on every single student that got a 502 in third grade in math, and we're going to compare their growth and we're going to calculate their growth based on how they did with everyone else that scored a 502. And that gives you the percentile data. Families probably are more familiar with like growth percentile data. You go to your pediatrician, you find out what average, so 50 is the average growth. Anything above 50 percentile, 60 percentile, that's high growth. Anything 40 or below is considered low growth. But that's, that's just kind of a, kind of context for what we're looking at for student growth percentile data. When you put growth and performance together, you get this nice little matrix. And in a perfect world, we'd have high growth and high performance. What's concerning is when we have low growth and low performance. There are some situations where you have high growth and low performance. That's a good thing. It's showing that the student, even though they're struggling on the MCAS, they're making growth relative to peers that also are struggling. So that's, that's a good indicator at times. Also, there's a, there's a world where we have high performance and low growth. That would be students that are like hitting the ceiling up there because there's just, they're, they're capped out. That's also okay because they're exceptionally, you know, they're scoring in the 580s and above. Couple of things I want to mention as well. Obviously, there's testing accommodations and those would be stipulated and outlined in 504 plans as well as IEP plans. So supports for our multilingual learners, MLs, and the participation rates for English language learners. So first-year EL students are not included in, in our data. And I just want to highlight, here are our benchmark comparative districts. And so for our norming experiences, we compare ourselves for taxation purposes and with municipal funding. So we're using the same benchmark districts for achievement. This kind of answers the question of value, right? What are the taxpayers' return on their investment, so to speak, when we look at it by each grade level and each subject area? And I put it in the context of assessment curriculum framework that are being assessed. Then we analyze the data and then we make changes and then we reassess. So it's, it is truly a cycle, a continuous cycle over a full year and then beyond. Prior to sharing this MCAS presentation, I did reach out to all of you and I asked for your, your kind of thoughtful questions, areas for me to explore. So you can see they're, they're all here. They're kind of, how are we doing over time? How are we doing in comparison to other communities? And then importantly, what's our strategic response? Couple disclosures, the MCAS data is private and there's confidentiality here when we get down to the student level. So student identifiable, identifiable student subgroups are not included. There are several platforms and data analysis tools that I've used that I just want to acknowledge. One is Naviance that's at the high school. We collect some of our SAT data through that. I've used AI. This, this platform is called Gamma, but no student data was put into Gamma. And then we also use a platform called Open Architects that helps locally with our own data set. It helps our teachers, our curriculum coordinators, our principals, and other administrators really analyze data at a student level, but at a, at a class level and school and district level as well. So I just wanted to put that out there, that these are the various tools that, that were used to help with this presentation. I'll do an overview of English and then what I'll do is select one grade level. And then I'll do an overview of math and then, and then I'll kind of share the takeaways and then open it up to questions, if that makes sense. All right. So here is the 30,000-foot view of how our district did last year on English and aggregate. So in this first column, you can see the grade level, but then over time, the percentage of students that passed the MCAS. And if you notice, we land, the headline is we did quite well in the aggregate. 81% of students by grade 10 pass the ELA MCAS. When you compare by benchmarks, you can see we are, it, it's a little bumpy here. And I'll, I'll show you another graph later in, in fifth grade, but we end very strong. When you look at student growth percentile data, there is no student growth percentile data for third grade. It's their first time taking the test. But consistently in the aggregate, we are above 50 percentile, so that is a good indicator. And then where we stack up with our benchmark districts and where we rank. And you can see we're in the top six or higher. This chart, I, I consider my spaghetti graph. And what this shows you is, and it is a little cut off on this, on this view, but on the far left side, you can see third, fourth, fifth, all the way up to 10th grade. And we, Westboro is this dotted line, the thick dotted line. And you can see there is variability in almost every district because sometimes students at, by grade levels have different experiences. But the keynote is we are trending in a positive and high performance and in respect to all of our, our comparable communities. Looking at the subgroup performance is an area that I do want to highlight because when you really look deeper beyond the aggregate, this is where some achievement gaps show up. Notably, students with disabilities and those students with disabilities that are passing the MCAS. So what I did was I looked at all of our students and then I compared to students that are on IEPs, all of our students, and then students that are from low-income families or students that are ELL or are former ELL students. And you can see their rates of if they pass the MCAS. And there is a notable achievement gap here. Also, I looked at the student growth percentile data in the aggregate compared to the subgroups. So that shows us some targeted areas that we need to improve on and, and support students differently. And then here is a kind of a comparative analysis, again, the spaghetti graph, but this is specific to those subgroups. And I focused on students with disabilities. So you can see all of our communities, there's a lot of variability here. But in the aggregate, how are students that are on IEPs compare to all the others comparable districts? We're in, I think we finished in the top one or two here and we're consistently at the top. I just wanted to point that out so you have some context. And I'm going to highlight third grade. So for the, the following slides, and as I said, there's like 130 or 40 slides. I'm not going to go over all of them. You can go very deep and look at each grade level. And this is the methodology, methodology I use to analyze this. For starters, I looked at our five-year trend. So this graph here shows that we had a nice uptick in student achievement in third-grade ELL, ELA last year. And you can see the average score is 502. So that means on average, our students pass the MCAS. And you can see that the percentages of students, the dark blue would be the exceeding, the light blue would be meeting, partially meeting, and, and not meeting MCAS. And you can see how students did in reporting categories. That's, that analyzes the standards. And also, I really kind of zoomed in on where students lost points on the MCAS. And it's no surprise. You can compare the difference to the state. You can compare the difference across the standards. Our third graders, and this is not a surprise, lost the most points on written composition. That is the hardest task, actually, in every MCAS and every grade level, is when you have an open response. That is the hardest task actually in every MCAS and every grade level is when you have an open response and you have to formulate an essay. In third grade and talking with some of our third grade literacy specialists, as well as the principals, what they noted was just the, the challenge of typing, the mechanical, the feature of typing is really challenging for our third graders. Nevertheless, what we did was I was able to get access to act, actually the written typed up responses that students put into the MCAS. And that information has been shared with principals and teachers and the coordinators to really look and see, how did the responses match up with all of our effort teaching them last year? So they've done that analysis right now. And this is how we stacked up third grade when you look at how we performed percent meeting or exceeding. And you can see we're, you know, in the top six or seven. So that was an overview of one grade level. What I'm going to do is I'm going to jump ahead now to math. And math is somewhere in like the fifty range. Just passed it. All right. Okay, so here's an overview for math. Similar methodology, we looked at the percent of students meeting or exceeding. It increases over time, which is good. It is an uneven path and it is to be expected, it's not linear, but similar, we're almost at eighty percent. Where we stack up with our benchmark communities, we finish second. Student growth percentile data is a little bit lower, but overall, I mean, look at the high growth we had in our sixth graders last year. That is, that is really remarkable to have that high growth in the aggregate. Here's the spaghetti graph just for all of our students that are meeting or exceeding for the entire district over time. So third grade would be on the far left side and 10th grade on the right-hand side. And you can see this, this bump here is where that seventh grade really had high growth and higher performance. When you, again, when you kind of look back and you look at subgroups of students, there are achievement gaps that are noted that we need to target our instruction on, specifically our students with disabilities and students that are EL or former EL in both their percentage passing the MCAS, but then also in their growth percentile data. And here is the comparative analysis for how students did specifically on IEPs in Westboro in comparison to the others. This wild one right here is Norfolk, which in, if you look in the data has an asterisk, that is King Philip Regional. And I think we have another one that has an asterisk and that would be North Borough and that's for the, the regional there. The final thing I'm going to do is show you at the very end of the presentation. I did take a look at some of the SAT data and this was at the request. And here's just some context about how it's scored and, and how it's now digital. It's important to know that many colleges are test optional. Kind of a breakdown of scores out of sixteen hundred. The national average is ten fifty across the state. And I compared both our historic Westboro average SAT scores with Massachusetts as average SAT scores and national SAT scores. And you can see across the board, we are consistently above the state and above the national average. I was unable to get our comparative benchmark districts. We have our own data because it's in Naviance at the high school level. But it was, it was just problematic and challenging to get it from all the other six fifteen communities. It's something I can look into if, if you're curious about that for the future. So here's the really, the takeaway and the important aspects. What are we doing? And I just want to highlight in the superintendent's update, she mentioned PD that happened two days ago. Or was it yesterday? It was yesterday. Yeah, it was yesterday. So we were focusing and our teachers were focusing on data. They were focusing on literacy, on numeracy at the elementary, elementary levels, on play-based learning at Mill Pond. They've gone deep into data meetings with our curriculum coordinators and we've taken a hard look at our writing curriculum. And the data helps to point out achievement gaps specific for tier two and tier three students. So those be students on IEPs and thinking about how we can support them differently in the future. But there is well alignment here with what we're doing currently with instructional change and professional development with our strategic plan. So if you, if you do refer back to our strategic plan that Allison has previously shared, there's a lot of support here for ELL students and for growth and like looking at WITA scores. We're partnering with Confianza. So a lot of what I would say we, we should do, we're doing. And the, the MCAS data actually provides validity and support that we're on the right path, especially with our professional learning and growth for educators. So, and then just doing what we're doing right now, being transparent, pointing out achievement gaps, making them known and focusing on them in the future. So as promised, that was just about twenty minutes. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I will start with Steve.
Yeah, looking at the SAT scores, we're very consistent over the years and consistently higher than the state average as well as in comparisons to national scores. We've, we've done very well. And of course, this school committee over the years has basically said, we deliver for our students and for our parents. Education that the kids get here is comparable to anywhere. Actually proud to be able to say that because this is the first time I think I've actually seen a comparison that most parents would, would recognize is valuable and, and informative of what we do here. I, I think the fact that we are so consistent, we ought to look at why that's true. And perhaps there's a way to jack it up another ten or fifteen points. So, you know, why not try?
Yeah.
Be a little better.
One thing I'll add about the SATs, obviously it's apples and oranges because all students are required to take the MCAS.
Yep.
SAT.
And this is the select group.
Exactly.
Or reasonably select.
The data is a little noisy because you have people that, students that will take the SAT and then take it again. So all of that is aggregate in the, in the score. So you, you do have some students that could drive the score up because they got a, you know, fifteen eighty and they're trying to get sixteen hundred and they get another fifteen eighty. I mean, so it's, there's always going to be noise in the data.
Just off of that, do you know what percentage of our students do take the SAT?
Ooh, good question. I would have to go back to the spreadsheet and do a percentage. I will look into that and get back to you.
Jane. Yeah, thank you so much. This was, well, it's a lot for you to put together, so I really appreciate it. Along the SAT lines, I was wondering the same thing, what percentage of our students take the SAT? And has it changed since 2020, when a lot of schools have gone test optional? And so I wonder, I mean, it would be consistent at the state level, I think, that, you know, more students applying to more select schools would continue to take the SAT where others may not. So the SAT data does look really good though, so that's nice. I'm really concerned about the MCAS scores in the students on IEPs. I mean, seeing an eight percent pass rate.
Yeah.
I mean, thank goodness, this is not a graduation requirement anymore. And I cannot imagine the amount of stress and resources put into getting those students over that hump when it was a graduation requirement because even just the whole grade on a whole for 10th grade with eighty percent passing. Obviously, we're graduating more than eighty percent of our students. So I think this is, you know, a reconfirmation of the decision to unlink the MCAS from graduation. So that was nice to see, but I am really concerned about the, that gap between the students with disabilities and, and the students overall.
Yeah. I just want to highlight, just so you know, we are unfortunately not alone. If you look at all of our neighboring communities, in fact, we're in the top out of the sixteen we comparisons to, we're number two. I'm not saying it's like everything you said is, I totally agree with. And we need to lean into it and find ways that we can better accommodate and support and differentiate our curriculum to make sure students can, can meet these challenging rigorous assessments.
Yeah, and the, the growth percentiles I noticed in the students with disabilities were can not much lower. So that was, I thought, really nice to see. And so I think all of the efforts in special education that we are putting in, you know, things like, I mean, it probably bears out in the data we're seeing right here with co-teaching and, you know, all of our efforts in, in special ed are, are paying off and in maybe the growth percentiles. And also I, I'm not trying to make us sort of chase our tails here. I mean, what we want is for the, all of our students to be learning and achieving and we are not going for an MCAS pass score. And I think you noted, we have students who are below the pass rate by two points. And, and actually some of these graphs here, you could zoom in and see there was a lot of clustering right around the, the five hundred. One thing that I saw in your memo, which was really helpful to summarize and distill all of this, I'm just not familiar with the tier, the different tiers of intervention. So one of the things that you noted was that maybe we could consider tier-two interventionalists, teachers, being teachers rather than tutors. And could you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah. So just for people that are unaware, so education jargon, right? We break down schooling into three tiers. Tier one is general ed instruction, universal instruction for everyone. We want to make sure like that is accessible, has principles of UDL and that it is both rigorous and there's multiple access points to it. Tier two is for those students that struggled with tier one and that aren't at tier three. So those are students that just need some extra help in a different way and think of it as like targeted interventions. There's many different approaches to doing tier two at different schools, at different age spans. Sometimes it's a pull-out model, sometimes it's a push-in model, sometimes it's an addition-to model. And what I mean by that is if you're struggling in math, then you double up on math with a different teacher. It just depends on the, the kind of configuration of the school and the, and the approach. There's some philosophical approaches in here as well. A tier-three model is when you get into students that are, that have a disability, a cognitive impairment, and they're on an IEP. And then they have very specific accommodations and modifications. So that, when you look at this graph, this would be specific to tier-three students. But what we don't have in Westboro right now is we haven't identified in a way that I can disaggregate all of our students that have had tier-two interventions. So that's what you don't see here. And I actually, I don't know many districts that do that level of granular analysis. I know our teachers do that and our interventionists do that, but it's just something we're, we're thinking of is how can we support students differently? And that's something that we're curious about.
So are you thinking that right now, those two tier-two interventionalists are tutors, but if they were teachers? I'm just, there was something in the.
I think that's something that's safe to say we can explore.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think one of the things we've been thinking about and talking about is sort of the structure of how we deliver those services and kind of how, how structured it is, how integrated it is, how consistent it is building to building. Those are things that sort of, it's kind of Meg and Matt partnering together because that layer of intervention and support is essentially can really help students who are struggling, especially in early grades, to kind of find their feet. And they, you know, even a student who might have a diagnosable disability may never need an IEP if we kind of get there early enough and figure out how to support that kiddo. So I think that's, that's work ahead. But, you know, I, I'd say broadly, there are trade-offs when you decide to go with a licensed educator versus a tutor. And, you know, you get more expertise and kind of a different level of, of commitment really with an educator who's in it for the long run and here. And it's more expensive, so you can't actually necessarily get to as many kids. So there's sort of, there, there's a balancing point. A lot of districts have a little bit of both, to be honest.
Yeah, but it's something that Meg and I have talked about. And I think we're in the very, we're at the point where we're curious right now. And we've identified, looking at the data, a need.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Matt, very much for the presentation. I, I am, I already spoke with you yesterday or two days ago about it, but I'll say it in public again. I'm, I, I really admired the amount of work that went into putting this together. It's very comprehensive. And, you know, for someone like me who likes to dig into data, this is, this is a goldmine. I really appreciate that. I hope you will share these slides through parent square to all the families as well. I, I think, I think it's great. I love, I mean, one of the goals we had when, when we were starting, when I was starting on the committee was, was transparency of information. I think this is, this is a great example of providing that transparent information to the families. So thank you for that. And I think, I don't think you mentioned this at the presentation today, you did include this in the memo. And I, I wonder if you could speak a little bit to the changes in the MCAS testing or the completeness of this presentation to the people that do not read the memo. I think it would be worth to hear, because I think that, I think it is important when looking at these results to have that context about the changes to MCAS.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's actually a really valid point because you're measuring apples to oranges and they've changed the criteria. They changed, in some cases, the standards that are being assessed. But, you know, Alice and I were, were talking about this. So it's, it's students in grades three through eight and 10 take the MCAS tests in English and math across the board. And what, what happened was the format has shifted. It was once a paper assessment and then it shifted to a digital assessment. And then they went from what's called the legacy MCAS standards to the next generation of MCAS standards. And that is where the apples to oranges comparison is. There were some metrics and data metrics that you could kind of like look at some growth percentile across that, but it's, it's substantively a different assessment. So when you look back over time, there is a significant change. Nelson, I don't know if you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, I think there were a couple of waves of this too. So I'm, I'm going to get my dates wrong. It was either like 2016 or 2018 where a first wave of these tests changed. And the tests changed, the scoring changed. And as a result, all of a sudden, the scores went down and I think there was a panic. But really, nothing changed about children or education, it's just the standards were kind of ratcheted up. And that was with a very specific purpose. I think the State Board of Ed was looking to do something. So it changed first in grades three through eight and then 10th grade, English and math. And then the final change has been just very recently, the science has, has brought those changes into the assessment. So we are now, just this year, I think for the very first time, all tests, all grade levels have a prior year comparison that's, that's the same. So this year and last year, you can definitely compare across the board. But when you go any further back than that, depending on the test, you may have to like consider this big, big shift depending on.
The only other thing I would add to it is civics is new this year.
Except for civics.
Yeah, so and there were two components to civics. One was a, in grade eight, it was more, would describe it as like trivia about how the, the function of government works. There's, there's a validity in understanding that, but then very interestingly, they had a second assessment. It was a performance-based task. That data was not released and that did not count for the MCAS. So they're exploring more like approaches that are creative, but yet at the same time limited by the device and the technology. So students were given multiple documents and they had to infer based on that and then write about it. So it was a little bit more analytical, but we didn't see the data yet. And I'm curious to see what the state will, like what the plans are going forward for next year's or for this year's eighth grade class, if they're going to then release that data or not. Yeah.
Thank you. I, you know, this is the first time I think we're having this discussion, and nobody mentioned COVID yet. Because and I think that's a good thing. And but I but also, in addition to what you just said, that, you know, we only have two years really of comparable information. You know, it's hard to tell, you know, have we recovered? That was always the question, haven't we recovered from the pandemic? You can't really tell from this data, but we're seems to be seem to be improving. I have a few pointing questions. One on, so on slide 14, I think January alluded to that, we have 81% of students meeting exceeding expectations on ELA for the 10th grade. Do I understand correctly that this means that 19% of these of students would not meet that requirement for 10th grade MCAS?
Specific for English, yeah, you you are correct, that they would not have passed the MCAS on a performance basis last year.
One thing that's important about this scoring is that in terms of competency, in the good old days of when MCAS was, or bad old days, depending on your view, when MCAS was used for competency determination and graduation, you actually didn't have to meet expectations. You had to get to a score threshold in partially meeting. So there's a number that's kind of in between. And if you hit that in between number and pass certain classes, then you're fine. If you didn't hit that in between number, then there was a retest option. And then there was an additional option to do kind of a, almost like a portfolio review of your work. But often, students who didn't hit that threshold would do a retest. You know, schools typically provide additional supports, and a lot of students make it on the retest, and the ones who don't have this final option. So the number of students who actually weren't making it is relatively few over time because it's not, even though it says meeting expectations, there is a sort of partially meeting that was allowed through for graduation.
Thank you. That that makes sense, because I remember, I think, last year or two years ago, when I asked about how many students did not meet that criteria, I think there were only a handful of students. So I would have been worried to see 19%, okay, that that makes sense. Thank you. On this next slide, I just want to understand if I'm reading this correctly. There is, there is a noticeable dip in the fifth grade for the for the ELA. Is is that, is that an area of concern or, or, you know, do I? If you look at the at the progression from the third to the 10th grade, it seems to be moving up in performance. And then in the fifth grade, there is a noticeable dip, and then goes back up into sixth grade.
You're talking about this dip right here.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's something that it does happen. I mean, if you look at all of the other districts, there, it's not like a linear progression. Very rarely would you not see a dip or see a bump. But it's something that, you know, we we look at and we kind of think about why that is. We look at the student performance, we look at the student growth percentile data, we look at. And so the data set that I'm showing you really right here on this, let's go to fifth grade real quick.
It does seem, though, that there's an inherent issue there, because all of them have a dip either before or after the one we're talking about. So it would imply that there's something embedded in the process that caused that dip for most people, whatever that was, which way the wind was blowing, who knows?
Yeah.
You know, it's it's interesting that that it does show up in most of the, most of the other comparables.
Yeah, that all valid points.
Yeah, I think a couple of things we would look at is over time, if we saw persistent, every year there's a dip in grade five, then we would want to look at what's going on instructionally in grade five, right? If we see that this fifth grade dip now looks like a sixth grade dip next year, then we're looking at our cohort, and maybe we need to throw more resources at this particular cohort of students to make sure that we're helping them. And then sometimes, you know, to Steve's point, you can look across the state and like the entire state takes a dip in seventh grade. You know, there's something about the test. So a couple of things we we would want to try and pull apart. It's never really neat and tidy, but it's more of a watch and see what happens next year and make sure we don't see it persistently. Because the one thing we have the most control over is that first scenario where if we see performance in a particular grade level that's persistently kind of dipping, then we can look at, okay, what are we doing with curriculum and how do we address that?
One of the things it might do it is cell phones. Think of that, you know, I mean, each town is going to do something different. But given what we seem to know now about how kids use cell phones and whether they get to sleep at night.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's an outside trend, but it's a trend.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say it's multivariate and incredibly complex. And sometimes kids are just, there's text, test anxiety is a real thing. Kids just don't perform. And then there's also, we've seen students go extremely, extremely quick through the MCAS. So I, the other data point that I've really always wanted and I can't get is the elapsed time. Because that would be an indicator of, you know, did a kid just go C, 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 and done? Or did they actually spend a lot of time? And as a former principal, I can say like, it's heartbreaking to see students so shook up over the test, and they're taking until 2:33 o'clock when you start at, you know, 8:00 AM. So there is a human element to this when you're taking a test, and it is a snapshot in time. You know, it's two testing days, and then we do all this analysis over it. And, you know, at the end of the day, they're still just kids. So I do want to just kind of emphasize that.
Thank you. I'll have a few more questions.
Yeah, of course.
They're not about any specific slide. I noticed in your memo, you mentioned that students tend to do well as they stay within the same building.
Yes.
And so I'm I'm curious, you know, what what's the strategy to to deal with that switch from building to building, you know, how do we improve that? So so we, they continue to grow.
That I am glad you brought brought that up. That's actually in our strategic plan. That's something that we identified and the data confirmed. And I'll also say, we're not unique with that. I did a study on on this exact topic, looking at transitions. And it holds true in across the country. But when students transition from one school to another, physical transitions, there is a dip in achievement for that cohort. It's, it's just the routines, the structure, the the nature of transitioning and not knowing the findings. So that that is like consistent across the educational world. One thing, I just want to cycle back on one thing you mentioned. So the the data here that we have, that's the spaghetti graph, that is not longitudinal data.
Correct.
That is just a snapshot on how all of our students did this year. What we can do, and I didn't do it, but perhaps I can look at it next year, especially if the fifth grade data in sixth grade continues in the same area, is go back in time. And I can track the fifth grade percent meaning achieving, and then how they did in fourth grade and how they did in third grade. And then you can see, like, how is that cohort growing over time? That's a different approach, too.
Thank you. Is there, is there any area of, well, maybe, I imagine there are some areas of concern. Can you mention at least one that's of of most concern to you based on these results? Have you discovered anything that that was maybe a surprise?
The the achievement gaps are something that I really noticed, right? And then when you look at the achievement gaps in comparison to the other districts, I think that was a shock, how other schools are also struggling with supporting students that are on IEPs. You know, I, I think that's, that gives me pause, right? But at the same time, it makes me want to think about how how are MTSS models, how are we providing interventions in a timely way to students in school in a way that boosts their confidence and then also like supports their grit and their tenacity? And they're just joy of school. Because I don't want it to be all about the tests. We want it to be, you know, the whole child. But this definitely points to some achievement gaps.
Thank you. Last question.
Yeah.
I also looked at the at the recommendations you had, and I'm wondering, how do these recommendations stack against our budget process?
So I did, I did this independently of our budget process. So like, your point earlier about the tutors. This is just something that I looked at, and I said, this is what the data shows. This is the logical takeaways. And then I cross referenced our strategic plan. And and it was, it was like, it was like a perfect marriage there, because everything I would have thought, like, oh, we should focus on ELL support and ELLPD. We've been doing it. Like, that predated any analysis I did. You know, looking at our students with IEPs, we just talked about Alan Blue helping out our our teachers today. So we're focusing on the right areas. I think it's, it's over time, we want to see change, and we want to see impact and results. And then thinking about our models, how we are intervening and how we are supporting, and can we do that differently?
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation. Incredibly detailed. The first question I have is relating, I know, and you just mentioned this as well, about professional development. I know that you had specifically called out looking at data on literacy in K through three. Is any of that related to other conversations currently happening at the state level in terms of updating some of the the guidelines and requirements?
Are you talking about specific to like dyslexia and reading curriculum or what?
Specific, I don't think it's specific to dyslexia. I think it's specific to just regarding early literacy instruction in general, like K through three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can sort of take this, I think. I mean, my understanding of the legislation and where it stands right now is it's a, it's very much focused on materials, on the kind of high quality instructional materials. And I think it's placing bets on the notion that if you use certain stuff, then that's going to impact performance. And so there was some transition, from what I understand, a few years ago to really shoring up some of the foundational literacy materials that we use in the district. I think one thing that we'll be watching carefully is the outcome of the state legislative legislature, because, you know, we don't currently have a of comprehensive, single, you know, monolith of a curriculum that is recommended by the state in most, most of our grade levels. So if, if, and I'm a misuse of the word curriculum, program is what I would say. You know, program is the sort of thing you buy, and the curriculum is the thing you're trying to to get kids to learn. So they're related, but they're not the same thing. And I think there's a lot of confusion about that. I will say, I think our literacy coordinator, K through three, is very, very versed in the kind of research that is backing a lot of the movement at the state level, so the science of reading work and the initiatives that are out there. And part of her work with teachers is really about having kind of clarity, data informed instruction, really emphasizing foundational skill building alongside comprehension. That's really the the kind of bush ball, right? And but we don't want to throw up comprehension altogether. So I think we're on it. The thing we're not on is if all of a sudden we have to sort of buy a lot of new materials, we're going to have to figure out how to do that. So we'll and train people up on them. But that's a conversation we'll start to have in the next few months, because I think we're going to have to.
And if you have any insight into what the state's doing, I'd just speak to me afterwards, please.
Sure, I'll break my crystal ball when I do, but. A couple, so I believe that this was already touched on, but I'd just make a note as you were looking at the the aggregate data, looking at some of the earlier grades, we had ranked on a lower percentile, and then we finished strong in 10th grade. I think that you use the term finishing strong, which to me implied what we were talking about before of not kind of individual cohorts, but more like potentially an issue, not necessarily issue, but, you know, something that could be improved on in some of those lower grade levels. Are you able, it's, it sounds like we are not able to comment at this time, like we just noticed that there is, it does seem to improve over the time, but we can't comment now if it's related to cohort, related to the individual grades.
Yeah, as I said, it's very, it's multivariate, and it's hard to tease out what the like leverage or the the variable is that is driving dips or gaps or spikes in achievement. It's just, honestly, it just depends. What surprised me was how strong our 10th graders performed, not only here but across the state, when they knew the test didn't count, right? I thought there was going to be a, who cares? Doesn't matter. But, you know, 80 or 79% of our students still showed up, took the test and passed it. The other piece I just want to bring up is there is no such thing as an opt out of the MCAS. Sometimes families and students have this opinion that they don't need to take the MCAS. And if they don't take the MCAS, it goes down as a zero, and it really does significantly plummet our scores. And that does count for our student growth percentile data, as well as our our achievement data in the aggregate, right? Or subgroups, for sure, too.
One, one thing I'd chime in about, too, is really, this is, this whole system is designed with the endpoint in mind. Because essentially, you know, we're receiving kids and, you know, as the the little ones for second, third grade, a lot of that's about learning how to do school, learning how to do the routines and structures of school, getting some sort of foundational things together. So the very fact of being able to take students and get them to a kind of 10th grade point over time, that's actually what we want. I would much rather have it that way than the other way in terms of the score trajectory. So so it's, it's, I would always expect a little bit of that, at least, in terms of scores over time.
And then my last question here, this like another thing that we have talked about at some length already, so I won't go too deep into it. But, you know, I really appreciate you including the subgroups and definitely have, you know, concerns. I think they're pretty obvious about some of the achievement gaps. I will echo what Jane said, and just talking about, it does look like the growth percentages are, you know, seem to be slightly lower than for the overall body, but seem to be in a, in a relatively good place, which does encourage me. I am curious just to drill in a little bit on the low income students specifically. I know you talked a little bit about the tiered intervention, and that that seems to be the kind of primary way in which we would address some of this. I'm just curious, and I don't know exactly what this would look like, but are there any interventions that we do outside of the class, I guess, specifically around low income to try to address some of the structural things in their life that might be impeding their ability to learn in the classroom?
Yeah, good, good question. Through mostly state grants, Title I grants, we do receive funding to hire tutors, and they work with students to get targeted intervention. Some of that is during the school day, some of that is after school day. The other piece I want to mention about subgroups, because it can be misleading. You can be a student on an IEP and ELL and low income, and that can appear in multiple subgroups. So each of the subgroups, it's like, think of like the Venn diagram, right? So it's, what we do is we go like down to the student level, and we can use the same data platform and, you know, toggle and see both or two or three indicators and really zoom in on the students. And then that's really the work of our coordinators with our principals and assistant principals, doing data meetings with our teachers, and really taking a look at how individual students did. And with the teachers and teachers, the nice thing about this platform is teachers can toggle back and forth between last year's students and this year's students, because they can see how the students that they taught last year did on the MCAS that have moved on. And then they can also see the students that they currently have in the classroom, how did they do on last year's MCAS? So they're informed on on students coming and going.
Absolutely makes sense. And I'm thinking as well, I'm not sure, I'd imagine that there's some kind of mechanism, but like we at Westbury, like, we don't have a dedicated like wraparound services coordinator. Is that correct?
No, I mean, so we do have fairly robust kind of clinical department in terms of sort of social emotional support and those types of services. And we actually just found out yesterday, I think, we have some grant funding to allow for counseling through Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, which is sort of an example of wraparound services, to be working with the schools eight hours a week or something like that. So so some dedicated time through that organization that's totally grant funded. There are organizations, Asabut Valley is one, that has, they've piloted different forms of kind of case management wraparound. And that's really sort of for family systems above and beyond the student level. So, you know, maybe a few students in a family, and there are a lot of things going on in terms of a home or a job or things that can really impact kids' ability to access school, right? If you're kind of worried and hungry and things like that, that's, those are things that really undermine learning. So partnering is definitely one of the things we can and should look at and continue to look at, especially right now, you know, with a lot of uncertainty about food, kind of food resources and things out there.
And certainly understand that there's a lot of uncertainty as well with the budget in terms of, you know, I know that we're probably not in the business of adding full time employees, kind of where we're, you know, to fill in some of these issues. But it's very encouraging to hear that there are grants, because, you know, exactly as you're saying, I guess that's just some of my concern of, you know, although it doesn't directly relate, and it's not specific to instruction in the classroom, what we can be doing as a school district to help support those kids that when they get to the classroom, they're able to focus.
Right, right. We've spent some real time actually thinking about that over the last few days. Right, right. We've spent some real time actually thinking about that over the last few days, especially. And, you know, pushed out with the town manager, sort of a more universal message to try and help get families access. But we've talked a little bit about what is it we need to do internally with our counselors, nurses, people who are often the sort of first line folks who will notice kind of issues with kids. How do we make sure they have information about referral and resource and things like that, too?
I mean, certainly in a time when, like, for example, obviously SNAP benefits going away, you know, that might be definitely impacted students, but.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I only have one question. I think everyone's asked everything that I had on my notes. My question was actually around the transition information that you had mentioned in the memo, similar to what Yakub was referring to. So I'm curious, I know you're saying that this is a nationwide issue where you see the physical change actually result in, you know, lower achievement, which I, which is really surprising. I mean, I guess it makes sense, but it's also kind of surprising. I'm curious, though, is that, is that what we solely blame this on? Or is there any issues with vertical alignment? And do we do, I'm curious in our district, do we do a lot of collaboration in these transition grades? Or is that something that's missing here?
No, I, I think it's, as I said earlier, it's multivariate, right? But I think it points to us doing a better job with transitions. And that's something that's in our strategic plan, actually, is taking a hard look at that and making sure that the communication from elementary to Mill Pond and Mill Pond to Gibbons and Gibbons to the high school. So how services are delivered, how Tier Two is delivered, how data is shared with students, about students, about how they're performing, about how we can do things differently. I think that's, that's all in our strategic plan, which we've already identified. That's why I think, for me, the headline is, looking at this analysis, independent of the budget, independent of the strategic plan, I feel like we were doing the right stuff with curriculum, with instruction, with PD. And this just kind of like adds credence that we're going in the right direction.
Okay.
Also allows us to focus.
Yes.
Yeah.
On things that you can improve by virtue of now seeing it and how it actually works so far and what you can do to improve that, which, which is another tool and it's a great tool.
So do we have, just like we, for co-teaching and other models that we have, do we have built in time for, you know, these, the transition grades to be collaborating as we, as it is, as it stands right now?
We, I'm going to answer that. I mean, one of the struggles that we have for all of us, the administration and the school committee, is actually doing all these things, all at the same time, all under the same pressure. And the answer is, they're doing the best they can. In fact, when we find something we can improve, we aim at it. You know, I mean, we've sort of said, but hidden under the table right now, the budget discussion that allows us to do these things or the time in learning that doesn't allow us to do these things. You know, with all the other pressures and stuff, you know, it's, it's having seven balls in the air and only two hands to balance them, so.
Yeah, but I mean, what?
I think it's a fair question.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a fair question. I think it speaks to priorities, right? Like, where do we want to invest or have our teachers invest their time? And, you know, I am always mindful that these are two data points. Like, we're, we're driving a lot of inferences based on the, the English test, which is two sessions, the math test, which is two sessions annually. I mean, they're important data points, but, you know, as Jerry can attest to, it's, it's, it's literally a test. And then each question on the test is tied to standards and it's tied to students and then in the aggregate. So I do think transitions is an area that we've independently identified. And the MCAS data kind of shows that, yeah, it's, it's a real thing.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, and I'm not going purely by the MCAS data, it's something that's been on my mind. It's something that I've observed and I've heard from other families as well that, you know, there's, there's huge, there's a huge, you know, people, kids have sometimes a really hard time in that transition. But I'm really interested in hearing that this is kind of an issue everywhere. So it's not specific to here, but we could do better. So that's great.
Yeah, I could just do better.
Chime in real quick as a student, I can certainly share that in Westboro, we don't teach students like take the MCAS, the MCAS exam, the format and the structure is quite different from what we learn as students in school. So that might also be another contributing factor. And in terms of transitions, I will say overall, even though there might not be a lot of contact between schools, I would say that administration and the faculty at all the schools do a pretty good job of integrating you into like a new environment and helping you feel welcome as a student who's like come through the Westboro Public Schools. So I think overall they do a pretty good job, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So I guess since we've done those two things, we want to now vote on also the competency determination policy that we had an opportunity to look at previously. Does any, do we, does anyone want to have a motion, make a motion on this?
Motion to approve the competency determination policy.
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion around this or no? Okay, all in favor? Five, five, zero, zero.
Hold on, hold on. Policy approval?
Yep.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't realize you already jumped to the next one. I'm just, I want to understand, why would someone, and I'm in favor of this. So I just want to have one, one clarification. Why, why would someone appeal to the, to the principal and, and contest a decision that the competency was met? Because there was. You can contact, there it goes. Role of MCAS in limited circumstances. And then there is a, there's a process that a student can, can follow to appeal the district's decision. I understand it makes sense to follow the decision when it's denied. Appeal the decision that it was approved, awarded.
That's a great question and one I will defer to our attorneys on who reviewed this. I think there could be certain situations where maybe it would arise. So I think using the language, you know, award or deny gives greater flexibility.
But I mean, unless, I mean, can someone appeal on someone else's behalf? Like, I'm questioning other students, because this doesn't say that necessarily.
No, no, this would be, you'd have to appeal, well, it would be the, the child or the parent guardian that would fundamentally appeal to the principal.
Well, is there anything, I mean, it's a decision, right? So does that mean that it's a yes or a no, or it comes in the form of some sort of written report?
So I wonder if this is about, I mean, I think some of the discussion around the MCAS in some communities is that it like holds the school responsible for competency, right? And so I guess this could be a situ, I mean, I can't imagine a parent saying, I don't want my child to get a diploma. But if they're saying you haven't given them the competencies, is that what this could be?
I think that's what it means, is that the parent thinks that he, they were shortchanged in terms of the education their kid got and they got the rubber stamp to move them on.
Well, I would also say that it could be in the context of other things that may be taking place in someone's life. So they may be going through some sort of core career hearing with respect to the competency of their child for something else. And so perhaps this could be determinative of something that they wouldn't necessarily want.
So it's just for completeness, in case some corner case takes place, okay?
Certainly there are events that, that are counter to logic, but still, even though it seems illogical that that would be the result, but to the extent that, that a family feels that they are denied something by virtue of having a positive answer.
Yeah, I think probably the most important part is number four up there, that the principal's decision is final and like the school retains the authority as the arbiter of determination. So people can appeal one way or the other, but the principal is the decider.
Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
All right, so I think that was five, zero, zero, we'd already voted to approve that. So I will move to the next item, which I don't think we have anyone here for, for citizens' request. Then I will move to school committee reports.
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up our vote of a couple of weeks ago in regards to the ZEV policy in that we established in writing what our policies would be in terms of how we react to it. One of the things that, that information that was garnered during our discussion back and forth on this, not necessarily in, in the meeting, but other discussions, is that there, there were other things that the town has created, of which one was a location where the town wished to have charging stations, which I'm assuming, not knowing it. I, first of all, I'd like to see a copy of that if we can garner one, to the extent that it is a report that was published. And if it is, and there are school sites that are interesting, I bring this up because I think early knowledge of what might have been an interest of the town has some consequences for us. Let's say there's a charging station for which our school meter is supplying the energy to it and therefore we would get the bill versus some other design that would, in effect, you know, create something specifically different in terms of how the energy is paid for. And therefore, as we know, most everything has some kind of a cost to the extent that, that you have to pay, let's say with a credit card at the, at your charging station to get the energy. You know, where does that revenue go? Particularly if we're paying for the power that feeds it. So there are a lot of consequences, I think, to the nonchalance of where we are on this thing. And to the extent that there are any, any information out there that would eventually come before us, I think early, early consideration of, of the various concerns that I have about this, which have been mostly financial in regards to our budget impact. And so being aware and being, let's say, understanding of how these things work. A second example of concerns that I know has happened to the school committee before is that one of the things that came up in discussion was that we get nothing free from the government. That is, if we get a grant, historically, we've been expected to pay at least 30% of the cost of whatever that benefit is. And so I know in the past with National Grid, for example, the way we pay that is in a future electric bill. And so we, the school committee, may not know that a commitment to something that involves National Grid has a future consequence for which we don't even know what that would be. And so like, like in all cases, I think we were successful in being able to maintain oversight of what those impacts would be based on the written policy that we established in addition to agreeing to the ZEV policy. And so I'm actually putting this on the table for, search for any information like that, whether it's National Grid stuff or whether it's a charging station. By the way, one of the other things in early research is a charging station will cost 50 grand. And it may have consequences relative to wiring the, to it or, or the demand for it. So there's a lot of different consequences of the, the obvious here. So anyway, to the extent that there is any of this information out there, if we, the school department, have any of that in hand, I'd certainly like to see it come before the school committee. So in fact, we can perform the, the request that, that we now created a policy to handle.
I'm happy to do outreach to the, there's a new sustainability coordinator and I believe there was a grant sometime early last year where the town was looking at sort of surveying different site locations, so I can just get an update on that for you and make sure we bring that back.
That would be great.
Okay.
And then obviously, we can ask questions about it. For example, we already have a design for a charging station at Fails. It's located, certain of the system was installed during the construction of Fails. The engineering design is in the hand of the facilities department. And in fact, we met one of the agents to, to have created that, which was from HMFH. And so we do have that available to us. But in the course of all of that work, we had correspondence with National Grid and understood some of these things, like the 50 grand to install it, who installs it, not any of the detail as to how we pay for it. But one of the consequences of the, the system that we have at Fails is we pay a demand charge. And so during the day when we create electricity on our own, we would have energy to, to feed that charging station. If someone is plugged in at night, there will, there will be a demand that we create, which is not inexpensive. It, the impact is on the order of, if my memory serves, at least the last time I saw one of these bills, is about $13 a kilowatt month. So if we are using, say, 300 kilowatts a month for the demand charge, that is a bill we see on, on the bill. So how all these things work in any other location for the school system has to do with all of this background stuff that I believe we, the administration, as well as the school committee, needs to know before we say yes or no. We maybe will negotiate different terms, for example, and still perform what we're asked to do. So enough on that, I guess.
And I will just quickly chime in as well, that certainly understand the, the concerns there and agree that we should be aware of any costs and what that would look like to the school committee. It might be helpful as well, Allison, as you said, to have Lila come in and just give a quick update. But I will say, at the last Sustainable Westboro meeting, we did a pass this sustainable, the ZEV policy, which is great, with the language that was passed here. And then I did ask her just for any grants or anything that would have any impact or have any relation to the schools, if she could just try to make sure to always be thinking of us for a presentation as well. So I did bring that up with her briefly, but would certainly may be helpful to follow up as well, so.
Thanks, Dave.
Nothing to report, but Allison, the, the communication you sent the other day collaborating with the town, that was really great. And it was so nice to see you and the town manager put that out together. So anything that we can put out with the town, I think, is really great. And I'm also glad to hear that it sounds like the school nurses and other supports are in place in school in case students need it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
On the similar note, not, nothing necessarily to, to report, but I just, I want to say thank you to the Westboro TV and to Jerry for, for providing the fall athletics update. I thought that was excellent. I was really happy to see that. I think I've never seen this at these meetings. I thought it's great to give credit to these athletes that worked hard in the fall and future season. I don't know whose idea it was, I think it was great. So thank you to the TV and to you, Jerry, for presenting that. I thought that was very nice. And I'm going to use this stage to, to, to encourage the residents who listen to this meeting. At this Saturday, there is a scouting for food organized by the, by the two troops, two Boy Scout troops. Especially at this time with the SNAP benefits not necessarily available to everybody. There is a dire need for, for restocking the food pantry. So if the residents were willing to participate, please put the food out in front of your house by 9:00 AM this Saturday. Thank you.
Just one quick fun update, I will say it was fantastic to see Allison and Matt over at the, the trick or treat event here downtown Westboro. So I'm not sure if anyone who was able to attend, it was, it was a sold out event, a lot of kids there and it was really great to see everyone in the costume. So thank you both.
That, that's one event we've been talking about in terms of budget impact, because the candy situation was incredible. We went through, what do we say, over 1,250 pieces of candy, which is over 25 pounds of candy. And in this sort of very panicked moment at about 5:20, which is not very far into the event, we realized we were about to run out and Lynn Hurley, who's my assistant and yours, made a run out to Ocean State Joblight. But even then, by the end, we were giving out the, the lifesaver mints that we keep in the office. It was, it was pretty, so we're going to have to budget a little differently or seek donations next year, I'm not sure.
It was fun.
Thank you.
It was so fun.
Jerry?
I do have a couple of updates about events happening in Westboro Public Schools. So next Wednesday, Fails at Armstrong is actually having their family paint night, which should be pretty cool. Then that Friday on November 14th, Armstrong is having their garden fall cleanup, which is where like families, you get together, it's like a nice little event. And then Fails is having their. And then Fails is having their spirit day on Friday, November 1st, 21st. So that's where all the little kiddos dress up and they're like Fails merch and they take pictures and that's usually a fun moment. And then next Thursday is going to be Bandarama. So that's usually a big event for Westboro Public Schools where all the bands from Mill Pond, Gibbons and Westboro High School perform for the parents. And they usually pack the gym. I think last couple of years, they've been running out of seats, so hopefully that trend continues. And then at the high school, the Westboro High School Fall Theater Production is this weekend. So if you're interested in buying tickets, it's, they're putting on a show on Friday evening and Saturday afternoon.
What's the show?
I have no clue.
It's, it's scary stories. It's some short bits, I think. It's like short plays, 10 minute, like 10 minute plays and there's a scary theme. I, I'm definitely going to go.
Scary stories to tell in the dark?
That it's, I don't think it was that, I think it's a riff on that notion, but yeah.
I usually do a pretty good job though. It's usually.
Okay, I have nothing to report, so we'll move into our action items. I think we'll take the first two together, if that works. If somebody wants to make a motion.
Sure, I move to approve the minutes from October 8th and approve the minutes from the tri board meeting on September 29th.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Five zero zero. And then we have a donation. Do you want to present that?
Sure, sure. Let me pull this up for you. These are, AIS Furniture is like a great community partner. We actually do see donations from them in a lot of different ways. And in addition, I, I know that they are a, a site that has done internship work with. I, I know they work with Post 22 and also I think with The Borough sometimes. So really, really great partner in, in, in Westboro. So a couple of donations here are these big mobile whiteboard divider things. So they're, they're, it's like a rolling whiteboard that you can kind of use. And it, it sounds old school and they're incredibly useful because not only can you use them for the whiteboard property, but they, they're just really good for dealing with sort of space and organization issues. So it's, it's a generous gift and we once again thank AIS for all their support.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept this donation?
I move that we accept the gifts offered by AIS Incorporated of Lemonster with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Five zero zero. And then we have our last.
Our next quarterly report from Accept is here. And I, I do want to note, I remember Steve had asked last time to get the, the kind of budget update. I do have that, it is sort of baked into a very long slideshow. So I need to reach out to them to get them to pull it out of the slideshow and, and share that back with you. But they are providing that and I just wanted to confirm that they are. But generally speaking, I, I may have mentioned this before, Accept is, under new leadership, they are, they seem to be very kind of moving right along in terms of thinking about ways to increase revenue stream and things like that. And, and exploring a lot of options and ramping up their professional development options, which is one of those revenue streams. So it's kind of exciting times over there. And I'm actually part of a subgroup, a working group, looking at programming as they consider ways that they might look at expanding their program options to be kind of more of a resource for the member districts.
Can I get a motion to accept the Accept report?
I will move to accept the Accept quarterly report.
Second. Sorry, and any discussion around that? If not, all in favor? Five zero zero. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Five zero zero.